It's 2:00 PM on December the 2nd, 2024. This is regular commission, uh, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Cleveland County. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
Thanks, I'll recognize Commissioner Hudson, who's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then give the day's indication.
Please stand, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Feet by your head, our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you have made today. We thank you for the many ones that have been sworn in today, for as local, from Raleigh or wherever they at. We ask you to give them knowledge and wisdom if they could conduct business that's pleasing to you. We ask you to give us wisdom that we may do the same. We ask you to bless each and every one here today, and we ask all this in Jesus' name and ever please to say amen.
Amen.
Next, I'd like to recognize any elected officials who may be present. All right, next, let, I recognize any veterans who are present.
Identify yourself in the branch of service.
Bobby Dyer, US Marine Corps, Army.
Edgar, United States Navy.
Johnny Hudson, US Army. Do each of you have one of the county pins with reference on it? Do each of you have one of the stars? You don't have a star, do you? Phil is gonna give you a star. Make sure that you open that star and you read the back of it. Now, read the back of it.
Me or them?
You want Phil to read it for you? Phil, read the back of it. I see some of them sweating, so.
This comes with age, too. Hold on. I am part of our American flag that has flown over the USA. I can no longer fly. The sun and wind have caused me to become tattered and torn. Please carry me as a reminder that you are not forgotten. Thank you for your service.
Thank you all for your service. Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement presence.
Kenny Allen, Sheriff's Office.
Derek O'Grady, Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, guys. And last but not least, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Carrie Melton, Assistant County Manager. Martha Thompson, Legal Department.
Chris Martin, State.
Emily Upfield of Cleveland County.
Close, have any plans?
Sure, have no plans.
Co-pret, Bill, Inspector.
All right, thank you all. Board, before us, is your motion to, our motion to adopt a proposed agenda, are there any changes, addition or remove, uh, removal of items from the agenda? Here none, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
One second. With motion and a second, all fair will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous. Exotic on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk?
The public comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and we begin and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments from the speaker shall be issue-oriented and directly related to the subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them from another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
First, we have Ms. Elise Screen. Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, sir.
How are you, ma'am?
I am very nice for asking. I want to thank the board for letting me come and present, um, the SBA, the, um, program that we have for your survivors of Hurricane Helena. My name is Arlie Screen. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience of the East. I am from Louisiana, though, so that's my address. So, we have, um, three programs available for your community. Um, we have one that is for homeowners, renters, landlords, business owners, and nonprofit organizations that suffer physical damages. We have another program that's available for businesses and nonprofit, um, organizations that suffer physical damage. And we have a third one that's for businesses and nonprofit organizations that suffer economic injury. Now, with the economic injury, they do not have to have any physical damages. Now, the, uh, the deadline for to apply for the physical damage part of this program has been extended to January the 7th, 2025, and the economic injury, the deadline to apply for that is June 30th of 2025. And the reason we give, um, that allotted time for that particular program, because a business does not know that they have been impacted. Sometime it takes six months or maybe even over a year before they notice that they can be, they have been impacted. Um, a neighboring community or town may have suffered more damages, and it trends, it tends to trickle down to all the communities at some point in time. Now, at, for the home loans, um, you can borrow up to 500,000. For renters, 100,000, and for businesses, up to 2 million. And the term of these, uh, loans are up to 30 years. Now, the interest rates, the homes can go as low as 2.8% for business, it can go as low as 4%, and for nonprofit, it is 3.250 straight across the board. At this time, I will open the floor, open the floor for any questions or concerns that you may have for me. All right, well, thank you for letting me come and present the program to the board, and I ask that you share this information with your community so they can get the help that they need to recover and get back to where they were before this disaster took place. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you coming out and presenting this to us.
Oh, you're more than welcome.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Next is Allison Steele.
My name is Allison, yes, Steele, and I'm at 1731 Pondell Road. That's Cheryl. Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Cotton and others. Thank you for your time today. I'll be brief in my comments since you'll be getting a package which includes details. But I would like to make known that in that package you will find explanations of my delivery on August the 6th. You'll also find an attachment. I hope all of you will take the time to read every word the folder contains. I feel the information presented is vital to improvements needed for animals in our county. The folder contains information I've collected in a number of ways that substantiates my claims from earlier in the year. It also contains a letter from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture Veterinary Division that confirms what so many refuse to admit, even though their own eyes have seen the evidence. What a shame for the animals. After reading the contents of the folders I'm presenting, it should be plain to see that change is needed, and sooner than later. The conflict of interest should be plain to see, as well as the advantage that has been taken of our animal services department. It should be plain to see that there's a problem with the commissioner overreach into one of her county departments. It should be plain to see that the credentials that are presented by Deb Harden are a far cry from what they actually are. It should be plain to see that our animal services department and our animal advisory board are no place for folks closely affiliated with Harden's organization, and that to allow that involvement to continue is a blow to the credibility of our county government, as well as our county's view of animal welfare. Additionally, until care has rectified their blatant disregard for state statutes, that organization should be barred from pulling animals from our taxpayer-funded department. The problem should be plain to see. Will they be solved? Will animal welfare gain ground, or will it lose again, as it has so many times? There are huge problems in the animal, animal world, not just here, but here's where we live. Let's work to fix it here. And a respectable start would be to examine what we do right here, and examine the people doing those things. Animal welfare is a cause that reaches out to those in need. It may be helping people help their animals, and it may be helping abandoned animals, but what it means is welfare for all that are incapable of helping themselves. How can you proclaim to be an animal advocate and only properly serve some of the animals that are in your care? Each individual is worthy as a creation of God. To turn your back on one yet sacrifice for another is incomprehensible to those focused on animal welfare. I will end with a verse from God's Holy Word as a reminder that He is watching. Matthew 25:40 says, "And the king shall answer and say unto them, Verily I say unto you, Inasmuch as ye have done it unto one of the least of these, my brethren, ye have done it unto me."
Next, we have Bobby Dyer.
Mr. Moore, Cotton, congratulations, Mr. Berry, commissioners. Uh, I have the report here that she was talking about, from the Department of Agriculture, and in front of you, Elliot, and, uh... That's enough of that, I'll take it in my three minutes for a video that I listen to every day. We live at 119 Mike Letherton Road. Our property adjoins Tammy Freeman's property at 516 Bethlehem Road in Kings Mountain. I have multiple videos dating back to October 23rd, early morning, afternoons, night, you pick the time. We have to listen to this continually and every day, and weekends are the worst because someone comes to do something with the dogs, and what I hear is they're there to get their hours. I've been pursuing this problem for over a year now with no success or resolve. We've had plans to build our property, we had plans to build on our property, we had an expensive perk test done, bought house plans, estimates from builders, and our dream has disappeared due to our neighbor's dog pound being established. I recently found out it is an unregistered sham for Clifford's Army Rescue Extravaganza with 14 violations. We've been in contact, trying to some, something done about the noise of all these dogs. Forty-three at one point in time, March 25th, 2024, 26 dogs, May 16, 2024, 22 dogs, in an unregistered shelter. Every time I've inquired about many dogs at the 516 Bethlehem Road, I'm told she's only to have nine. I guess that's untrue when she's been keeping well over nine in an unregistered shelter. She has someone, has someone been covering for her? I'm not sure, but I'm not getting the real story. This facility should be shut down immediately for the welfare of the animals and the nuisance it is, that it is to our neighborhood. In North Carolina, a neighbor can be considered a nuisance if they use their property in a way that is unreasonably interferes with a neighbor's enjoyment of their land. This is known as a private nuisance. Examples of a nuisance include loud noises at odd hours, barking dogs, and loud parties at night. This is one reason we need a county ordinance law to protect county residents, because we are taxpayers, too, instead of having to take someone to court to resolve issues such as this. This is deviating my property and my health. I've been in contact with everyone here before me about this situation through email, texts, phone calls, or face-to-face meetings. We've even reported the use of our taxpayers' van at Tammy's private residence late at night during who knows what with this van. Tammy is a part of an employee of an animal shelter which has been told not to have the van in her house. The part I don't understand is how the county allowed the establishment to continue with all the civil penalties of up to $5,000 per violation. I do respectfully call for the president and registered agent of Clifford's Army Rescue Extravaganza being a party to an unregistered animal shelter, Deb Harden, to resign from her seat as Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. And I also request Tammy Freeman resign from her part-time job at the Cleveland County Animal Shelter for your, for being part also to this unregistered animal shelter. Thank you all for your consideration and do the right things for the citizens. Thank you.
Next is Tyler Watts.
Hello, everyone, I'll make mine quick. I'm Tyler Watts, I'm one with Broad River Campground, and we're under consideration for the Small Business Incentive Grant. Happy to be considered, and if you have any questions for me, happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Commissioners, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Uh, we all have seen the material in the consent agenda within our packets. At this time, is there any questions? If there are none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All right, here none, all fair will say aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have three public hearings, Madam Clerk.
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and the members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing, I'm sorry, I lost my spot. A public hearing is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to another speaker.
All right, the first one we have today is, uh, Sherri Lavenders will come forward. This is the Small Business Incentive Grant Program, and this is for SRI III LLC. Sherri?
Good afternoon, thank you for having me. Um, we had an application for SRI III, uh, doing business as Broad River Campground. Um, as you know, this board, um, voted several years ago to, um, support our small businesses in Cleveland County. The, uh, application for SR III came in timely. However, there was an audit and an unresolved appeal. That's why I'm not bringing it to you till today. This is actually for the 2023 grant year. Um, once we got the, uh, unresolved appeal and everything solved, um, I was able to bring this before you. SR III has made the application for participation in this Small Business Investment Grant Program. Under the program, a qualifying net new investment of 50,000 to a million dollars would be eligible for a grant equal to 50% of the taxes paid on the new taxable amount. Um, the applicant has made the investment requirements, they've met and paid all taxes, and there are no unresolved appeals at this time. Um, we are suggesting that, um, and the staff recommendation is to approve, um, this grant in the amount of $2,850. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Or, or any questions of Sherri?
I've got a question, okay. That grant is over and above what he, he owes, whatever taxes, but he got enhanced his tax burden by $250,000. Did he do that?
Yes, sir. He, he, he has an investment of over $2.7 million for 23. We're only, uh, requesting the grant up to the limit of a million dollars.
Any other questions? All right, here are no other questions at this time, I declare the public hearing open. We got no one sign up to speak, so now the public hearing is closed. Now it's time for the board to deliberate. Some questions before the board is to approve the grant as Sherri's laid out, and we can ask her any questions that she would have, and then Tyler's here as well, he have questions for him.
She didn't answer my question, so I'll make a motion to read through the grant.
Second. All right, we have a motion, second to approve the grant. It's detailed by Sherri Lavender, our tactic says, or are there any other follow-up questions or discussion? All right, here none, all fair will say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion carries unanimous. Next, thank you Sherri, thank you Tyler. Next item before the board is a planning, the next two are planning department cases, so the first one's planning department case 24-19. This is a, an application to rezone 33871-1 Towery Road from residential to general business. This is a conti, a conditional use permit for a billboard. Chris?
Thanks, Jerem. Good afternoon, board. Got two items for you tonight, the first being a request from a developer to, uh, change the zoning of a piece of property.
Grabber, slide changer.
Um, it's, the property's at Towery Road, it's about five acres, being carved out of a larger 25-acre tract of land. The applicant is Scotty Outdoor, they're a billboard company, and, and their proposal is, you know, the, the reason behind their request is to be able to place a billboard on the property. They're asking to change it to an appropriate zoning district of general business, conditional use, and that's where they show you a plan and show you where they want to place a billboard. Um, and then the parcel number is 32656. They've provided a site plan which you have with you, um, showing the five acres, and you can see that it's located along the New 74 Bypass, south of Latimore. Um, and then you can see also through the property a transmission right-of-way line, um, on the backside of the property. And then you'll see where they're proposing to place this sign, about in the middle of this five acres. The zoning districts that we're looking at, the current district is residential and it's very traditional, allows single-family dwellings, half-acre lots, and the requested district is a general business, and that's the district where you get a long list of commercial uses, billboards being one of those. We have some sign standards, um, which with their proposal, they are meeting the standards based on the, the plan that they've submitted. Um, standards include that billboards have to be at least 1,000 feet from each other. Um, there's a size limit of 325 square feet. They have to be 50 feet off of a four-lane road, and then 300 feet back from any residential Aerial photo showing this property, you can see it's a, a pretty rural area, you've got the, the existing, you got a bridge along 74, the New Bypass, um, large tracts of land, um, rural in nature, and then the parcels that do have structures are, are, are single-family dwellings. And this par, parcel is accessed off of, uh, Towery Road that leads back to, uh, Town You'll see on the zoning map, this area is mostly residential in nature. Um, and then our land use plan calls this area future secondary growth, which, uh, accommodates a lot of residential uses. We've, um, presented this item to the planning board, they recommended approval. Um, they, they just noted that being along the 74 Highway, that this would be a common use that we would see and will most likely see others. I can answer any questions?
Thank you, Chris.
Back when you, when you had the, uh, Carroll view, looked like there was a, a structure or something in there, is it, did that make, maybe specification far enough away or whatever?
I, I'm unsure what that structure is on that property. It's, it's sitting in the middle, you can see it there.
Is it over three, kind of figured away?
The proposed sign site is.
Okay.
But that, that's not a residence, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter to that structure the distance. The, the 300 feet does matter to existing residential uses.
Well, you said you didn't know what it was.
Well, it's not a residence.
Okay.
I'm so, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, I'm married to property, I believe that's born, like last stop born.
I think so, too.
There's a, here's the, the, that's, uh...
That's right there, Roshi Creek.
Thank you.
Good catch, Commissioner Hudson.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, we're also required to have a public hearing for this, so at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Again, no one signed up to speak, so the public hearing is now closed. So now we're on to board deliberation and decision, so is there any other questions or discussion?
If no other questions or discussion, I want to make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Another motion, second to approve the request. Any other discussion? Here none, all fair will say aye. Anyone oppose? That motion also carries unanimous. Next, this planning case 24-20, this is a text amendment to section 12-21 and 12-124 private storage building. This comes from a UDO, or Unified Development Ordinance. Um, so at this time, I recognize Chris Martin again.
So our second item is, uh, an amendment to text in our code, um, specifically the section pertaining to private storage buildings. If you recall, back during the summer, the board adopted a version, or a, a, an example of an ordinance that allowed storage buildings on lots that are vacant without a residence, um, in the rural zoning districts. It allowed those with several things, um, mainly setbacks and building size requirements. In that current ordinance, you can have a 1,500-square-foot building as long as you had one acre of land in one of those rural districts. You could have up to a 2,500-square-foot building as long as you had at least two acres, and 4,000-square-foot building as long as you had at least three acres. And there was a setback requirement included in that ordinance that was adopted of 100 feet from any right-of-way, street right-of-way. You've asked staff to reevaluate, um, this ordinance, um, not necessarily where and the zoning districts they're, that they're allowed in, but specifically these standards, the, um, the, the setback requirements and the building size. Staff has, um, reviewed, and what we've come up with is some building sizes that we think are reasonable and, and help, uh, drive the intent of the ordinance of allowing private use storage buildings. I think one topic of conversation we've had is when you get into the larger 4,000-square-foot buildings, you can really get into more commercialized buildings. So that's been a topic of conversation, and staff's come up with a version for your consideration that we think, um, addresses that and, and splits those building sizes in half, making them more reasonable for residential use. So you've got a copy of this draft in your packet, and what you'll see is it really addresses three things. Um, it addresses the requirement for a scaled site plan. It, um, reduces the setback requirement from 100 feet to 50 feet, so it gives the property owner some more flexibility about where they can put the building. Um, but then it also reduces the allowed size of the building based on that acreage of one acre, two acre, three acre, um, basically cutting it at half, and that's the version that you've got that staff has drafted for your consideration. Um, so what you'll see is if you have one acre, a 750-square-foot building could be permitted, two acres would allow a 1,250 square foot, and three acres would allow a 2,000 square foot. Um, and again, the setback requirement would be reduced to basically principal building setbacks, um, which is 50 feet in these two rural zoning districts. We've presented this item to the planning board, um, and really, there was only one section that they recommended a change to, and that was the one-acre lot, um, of 750. They, they are suggesting to change that to 1,250 to match the two-acre lot. So basically, if you had a one acre, you can have up to a 1,250-square-foot building. Uh, the reason the planning board made that suggestion was, um, your standard building size being a 30 by 40, so a 1,200-square-foot building is a standard building size, and they felt that was a more, um, logical size that, that, uh, should be allowed. And they recommend approval. Um, so for this afternoon, um, this board, what you have in front of you is a draft written by the, the staff, um, and then you've got the planning board's recommendation of approval with that one change to the one-acre building allowance, and, uh, for this item, you can have a public hearing and approve or deny.
Now, did we change the setback part?
Yes, that, that...
Cut that part?
Yes, what you'll see in that draft that you've got changes, uh, the setback from... Yes, what you'll see in that draft that you've got changes, uh, the setback from one hundred feet requirement, which is what was adopted in July, to fifty feet.
To all standards?
Yes.
I'll make sure it's in there.
Yeah, it's worded like that, all principal use standards, um, but when you look in the principal use standards for those two zoning districts, you'll see fifty feet.
Okay.
I can answer any questions?
What questions do we have for Chris?
The only concern I have is a seven-hundred-and-fifty square foot building. You're changing that to twelve-fifty?
The current ordinance is, uh, fifteen-hundred square feet. Um, what, staff drafted a version for your consideration tonight, and we drafted that version, um, reducing that to seven-fifty. The planning board, um, with their recommendation, they are suggesting to increase that draft to twelve-fifty.
Were you, you said twelve-fifty on one acre, or twelve-fifty on two acres?
One acre.
But the planning board recommended twelve-fifty on one and two acres?
One and two, yeah, they had no change for two, they recommended increasing one to match two. I think i- if that version is adopted, you would essentially just eliminate the two acre component of it, and just have a one acre option and a three acre option.
Are there any other questions, or can we get the public hearing out of the way? All right, if there's no other questions at this point, uh, I'll declare the public hearing open. And again, no one signed up to speak for the public hearing, so the public hearing is now closed, let's back to the board to deliberate. I think this building size, so... The current building size is twelve-fifty, twelve-fifty, four, twelve-fifty, twenty-five-hundred, and four-thousand. Staff recommending cut it, reducing it to seven-fifty, twelve-fifty, and two-thousand. The planning board recommended twelve-fifty, twelve-fifty, and two-thousand, and I think Deb has a compromise.
Yeah, I think the compromise would be, um, that, uh, one acre was fifteen-hundred square foot minimum, two acres would be twenty-five-hundred square foot, three would be thirty-five, it moves in the same amount per acreage. And none of them should exceed thirty-five-hundred square feet in size.
So that really only changes one, it changes the four thou- reduces the current four-thousand to thirty-five-hundred.
And then they have the, the standard-
Split, they go on a thousand per. And it reduces all the setbacks to whatever the standard setback is. Making that in the form of a motion?
Uh, I'll make that to adopt that motion, the, the, adopt the planning board's recommendations with those modifications.
I'll second that.
So that'll be with a fifty-foot setback, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
For those two zones, classification. Fifty foot from the main road, what is, what is it on the back line?
Be fifty from the front right-of-way, thirty feet from rear property line, and a ten feet from the side.
Fifty from the front, thirty from the back, ten from the two sides. And the built square foot is to be fifteen-hundred for one acre lot, twenty-five-hundred for two acre lot, thirty-five-hundred for three acre lot, so no storage building can exceed thirty-five-hundred acres total. So this is, has a motion and a second, are there any other questions or discussion, make sure we're all clear on what, because this has been before us a couple of times, and, uh, me for one, I'd rather not see it back again, so. We've been talking about storage buildings for over a year. Any other questions? All here none, all in favor will say aye, oh, idiot, so we have a motion, the second all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? Our motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Next, we're on to the regular agenda, and we have another oath, so at this time, I'll recognize the clerk, or tax collector, tax assessor, vote.
First, I'm going to do Sherri Lavender. Do you, Sherri Lavender, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you, Sherri Lavender, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend a constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge, so help you God? Do you, Sherri Lavender, further swear that you will faithfully and truly execute the duties of the office as the tax assessor of Cleveland County, according to the best of your skill and ability, and that you will not allow your actions as the tax, tax assessor, be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as tax assessor for, for Cleveland County, so help you God? Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, Denise Jones, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, so help you God? Do you, Denise Jones, further solemnly and sincerely swear that you will faithfully and, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend a constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God? Do you, Denise Jones, further swear that you will faithfully and truly execute, execute the duties of the office as the tax collector of Cleveland County, according to the best of your skill and ability, and that you will not allow your actions as the tax collector to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your office as tax collector for Cleveland County, so help you God?
I'd like to congratulate both of you, I saw her come in, I was going to tell her, I've done paid my taxes.
All right. Next, we have some board appointments. So commissioners, you see on your agenda, the first one's community college board trustees. Uh, at this time, there's not a current vacancy, so, uh, without any objections to the board, I propose that we move that to January the twenty-first.
I think if everything went like it's supposed to, there'd be no reason for us not to go ahead and bring this up and make the appointment unless it's something, something out there we don't know about.
There's two questions, one, there's not a vacancy, and second of all, we're not, we need to talk with the speaker's office in the senate. We need to make sure that, that if the vacancy does occur, it does fall to this board.
Okay.
Do you need that?
So it's my recommendation that we punt this until, or delay this until January twenty-first.
Okay. Do you need it in a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we delay this to January twenty-first.
Second. Any other discussion? I hear none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next, shooting range advisory board.
Yes, board, you have the list of applicants in front of you, at this time, you will need to appoint five people to serve on the shooting range advisory board.
Five names total?
Yes. The three, um, the three at the top would be for, uh, reappointment consideration, and then the other names listed would be for initial appointment consideration.
So it's the five names.
Okay, so I would like to recommend, uh, Betsy Harnage, David Hanson, Andrew Harper, Woody Edwards, and Eric Garber.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next, as you all are aware, commissioners also sit on various boards, represent the board on, on these various committees. With the board change out in the organization meeting this morning, uh, there was some movement, all of it, all, all of you guys know about this, we've all discussed these. So I'd rather not read all these off, um, but I, I'll have the clerk read those off, and, and then we need to approve or make adjustments as necessary. Some of these can't move. Well, the appointment on the board trustees can't be moved, but the rest of them could be moved around if the board so desired, so.
Okay, so the, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tare, the, um, the boards with new movement would be, um, I'm sorry, where am I, so it would be, um, the Cleveland County Advisory Board of Health would be, uh, it's recommended for Commissioner Johnny Hutchins. For the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, it's recommended for, uh, Commissioner Tony Berry. The MPO, the, um, the primary candidate, the primary person will be, uh, Commissioner Bridges, and then the alternate would be Chairman Kevin Gordon. For Partners Behavioral Health, uh, it's recommended for Commissioner Tony Berry. And then the last, uh, board recommendation is for the Uptown Shelby Association for Commissioner Tony Berry.
So with that, if I desire the board, we need a motion and a second to adopt those amendments on, that she just stated.
I'll make a motion with approval, except for one that you stated to hold in that meeting.
Second.
All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anybody, anyone opposed? All right, we have one last item, and that is a closed session, so let me read this to everybody, it's a closed session, for North Carolina statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight-six. To consider the qualifications, competencies, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual, public officer, employee, or respective public officer or employee. With that, I entertain a motion to go into closed session for that specified reason.
Settled.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Board stands at recess, house of like-
All right, so the board voted during closed session there to return to open session. So be noted, the board is now in open session. During the closed session, the board took no action. So with that, commissioners, are there any comments, questions that you'd like to add before we adjourn? All right, here and now, again, Tim, this is your last official meeting. As we said this morning, thank you for your time and everything that you've done.
Mm-hmm.
Enjoy it. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. The next meeting of Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Wednesday, November the 4th at 9:30 at the Cleveland County Health and Social Services Building for the Board of Commissioners' Work Section. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may I?
Next motion. Is there a second?
Please.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We can adjourn.
Commissioner.